Join me in the order? Please join me in the place.
Yeah, yeah. He is working. I need to go to the bar last week.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know where you started.
I know.
That's why I have this call roll.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
I'm happy to. Frost.
Here.
No.
Here.
Ben Joseph.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Gorson.
Here.
Moon's here.
Tyre.
Here.
We're all here tonight.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
None.
All right. No student activities, it's summer. So, best part of the meeting.
This is it. So we begin with student recognition. And we have our principal, Mr. Goble, who's here to lead us through some fantastic recognition tonight for a lot of state champions and high academic achievement.
We have over 150 students to celebrate today. We also have a few students who actually won multiple state championships. Somebody is on this list four times. So congratulations for all of your amazing work. And my favorite part about this list is it's from pieces and bits of all of our school. So what you hear is a wide range of success in lots of different activities. And speaking of amazing success, come on up guys, because you're going to help me pass these out. So we'll do it right here. The way that we're going to work this for families that are in the room, we'll have you come up. We're going to give the award to your son or daughter. You'll get a handshake photo and we'll let you take that right away. And then we'll get as many of the team as has showed up. We'll have everyone come up in the front. We'll take a group photo and then we'll send them back in. So you'll have two chances for photos and we'll give you plenty of time, families, to make sure that happens. So the first set of awards that we're excited to give out today are for students who have received a perfect score on the ACT. So, I didn't know if I needed to be in the mic.
No.
So these are students who received a perfect 36 on the ACT, which when you talk about, there are only probably, there are like less than 20, 25 of these in the whole state. So it's pretty amazing. So we have, we actually have four folks who've made that experience. And I just met one in the hallway who will get her award next year because she just got her score back last week. So first of all, Angela Vow, please come forward. Turn around and face your, Mr. Families here, we've got a photo. And just stay up here, if you could, just move over to the side. Yep, just move over, thanks. Just stay right here. Congratulations.
You can, yeah, the parents that want to take pictures, come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Take your picture.
Yep. Kevin Shen. Congratulations. Now, we'd like to get all three of you together if we could. So if you wanted, families, come on up, if you wanted your picture of the three of them together. Guys, hold your plaques up in front. There you go. Get out of the way.
Come up closer. Come up closer. They're smart, they get close. They're smart, they get it.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next group to recognize, this is just fabulous work out of this group. Our mathematics team won the state championship this year. Coach Kim with one of the best scores in the state, like your, like highest score ever. Yes, like they actually, they didn't have a number high enough to count what that was. So they had infinity, that's what they got. So we're going to invite folks up. It doesn't look like we have everybody. So just, we'll just keep calling names. When you hear your name, please come forward. Ben Shen. Again, get that photo.
I think cute.
Jayden Shen. Angela Vow. David Junichow. James Koshak. Katherine Lee. Richard Chu. Audrey Zlazdoff. Lillian Wong. Oh, I got two in a row, I'm sorry. Is this Andrew?
Andre.
Andre, come on up. Go back, I didn't see him coming, so I kept reading names. Give him a minute, yep.
Just one second.
And then we've got Lillian Wong, right? Come on up, Lillian. And Katherine Lee. Andrew Zhang. And all I see are Coach Kim, so come on forward, Coach Paul Kim. Jayden?
Jayden Chen.
Jayden Chen, yeah, Jayden Chen.
But we don't get to talk to these kids, though.
And then Coach Kim, come on up. All right, let's do a group shot, so we've got them all together. If you can, go ahead, families, come on up. You guys need to swing over, move up a little bit, so we get a nice picture. It's not far away. Move up a little bit. Last year they were crystal, that would have shattered.
We don't get to talk to them, huh?
No.
No.
Not tonight. We'd be here tonight.
That's the best part.
All right, thank you very much for the math team. Next up, we have our IHSA Journalism State Champions, who we are really excited to celebrate with, but we don't have anyone here. So congratulations. Oh wait, you do. If you are a student, you need to go in the back of the room. And we're getting you all in. So if you're in the crowd right now, you're a student, please go in the back and we'll get you. There you go, so we can call out your name. I'm going to let Sean just, Sean just announce her.
Okay, we have Anika Krishwami.
Are there any, get that picture, turn around. Thank you so much, congratulations. So again, if you're a student, please head to the back of the room so we know you're here and we can call you up. Next up, I believe is Science Olympiad. Is that the group we have next? So we've got our Science Olympiad team. Now, we're going to hold off on the big story about Science Olympiad for just a minute until we get them all up here. But let's just start with the fact that this group earns state champion honors this year, which we're incredibly proud of. So I'm going to read off the names and if, when you hear your name, just start walking forward so I know it's you. So we've got Angela Vow. Get your picture. Tisha Hette. Congratulations. Noah Kang. Elena Lu. Trisha Mandal. Grace Murray. Helen Shen. Kevin Shen. Sidhat Sen. Karen Song. Joshua Song. Jonathan Chow. Shikar Venkatesan. Angelo Wang. Can I have my mark on that? Mark Yang? Mark Yang. Come on, Mark. Yeah, we know, we just didn't have any picture. We'll get you one. I think we did think you were coming, so we didn't. So I have two coaches here tonight. I see Coach Cora, please come forward. And Coach Dr. Anne May. All right, so we're going to get everybody up here in front. And I want to show off a couple of things for this group, just because it's pretty spectacular. So when you win the state finals, you get a trophy that looks like this, which is pretty amazing. So we're going to have, can you hold that for me while we're taking our big pictures? But this group wasn't happy with just winning the state championship. They actually, for the first time in the history of my school, brought home the national championship. So this is a true national championship. Two teams from each state are brought to this competition. They are the best two teams from each state. And at the end, we came out victorious. Coach Cora's first year working in this program. So I'm expecting some sort of world domination. Go ahead, take a group photo. Congratulations, guys.
I suppose they're all juniors. So Troy, are they all juniors?
I don't.
You're wrong. Anybody graduating senior, going to college?
They're not here.
None of our seniors are here yet.
Oh.
All right. Thank you very much, Science Olympiad. That is a super new genre, an amazing, amazing feat by that group. So congratulations for sure. We have many winners for the FCC LA Family Leader Career Leaders of America State Championships. So we're going to call off those names now. So if you're in the room, please come forward. And we're going to start with Abigail Prellman. Regina Chan. Abula Bahama Sharom. Elizabeth Mark. I don't remember Elizabeth from last night. Elizabeth, two months in a row, I think that's the word, maybe? So awesome to see her. Addison Pack. Virginia Thomas.
She loves the clothing and stuff, huh? Yeah.
Photo? Ira Tiawari. Congratulations. And Myra Vivas. Both of our amazing coaches are here tonight, so come on up, Coach Bum and Coach Ryman. Come on forward. All right, get any group shots here that we need? There you go, one each side. All right. One more big round of applause for the FCC LA. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have our Skills USA Illinois State Champion, Janelle Landau. Come on forward. Got photos right over that way? There you go. Thank you very much. I think it's just you, so. Congratulations. And we also have our IDEA winner for 3D Architecture State Champion, Dan Ryman. He is coached by Ryan May, who couldn't make it today, but also, we're going to celebrate those great coaches. Dave Pope, congratulations. Thank you very much. Next up is our FBLA Future Business Leaders of America State Champions. I just want to keep pointing out, all of these people that we brought forward today have won a state championship in some space, which is absolutely amazing. So first up, we have Darius Attah. It's amazing. Amazing. Soraya Chandra Kassar. Brian Hu. Amelia Cornalova. All right. Smirti Kumar. Audrey Yin. And the coaches for these guys, Coach Berlowski, Coach Carlson, and Coach Merlatti, all fantastic members. I don't see any of them here. So you guys want to come together? We'll get one quick shot of the two of you, right? Yep. Moms and dads, get that. And there you go, all the way. One more big round of applause for our FCC LA. Now we're going to switch gears to, again, we're all over the place. This is, this competition is called the Tests of Engineering Aptitude Math and Science, or the TEAMS Competition, which is a, they had to work hard to get that acronym fit in there. The TEAMS State Championship. Looks like we have a few people here. So we have JD Shen. Brian Hu. Errol Top. And Lillian Wong. This amazing group is coached by Coach Weersma, who I don't see, but we'll get a photo here and we'll get a group shot. Group shot, families? Okay, go ahead. All right, big round of applause for our FCC LA State Championships. Next up, Envirothon. So we've got our Envirothon State Champion, we have Ishan Bonajiri. Come on up. And Angela Vow. Noah Kang. Soraya Metta. And I don't believe she's here, but also Champions Angela Wang. All right, so Envirothon, these folks are saving the world. Let's get a picture for this crowd right here, state championships in Envirothon. Congratulations. All right, the next two groups we have to recognize are larger groups. So this year, and I'll have Coach Johnson help me out here in a minute. How many, in the last five years, how many state championships has this group, the Badminton Team, won?
Four state championships in the last six years. And then two second places.
So.
We had the COVID year, which we definitely didn't want.
The state, the state Badminton, this Badminton Team, just think about the excellence in that. Four championships in six years, state championships. And the other two times, they had to settle for second place. This is an absolutely excellent group. That really has built themselves and prides themselves on overperforming. So we've got a lot of kids to celebrate today, so I'm just going to call you up. Lashia Affiyuri. Rini Fagwatt. Megan Addixit. Roger Fang. Andy Arish. Brian Hu. Katherine Lee. Brian Lu. Reezy Malala.
Look at this kid.
Love it. Katie Moy. Neevi Nair. Congratulations. Veronica Onetsky. Reshma Rajesh. Runi Sathar. Sanchita Vendi Yavathan. Lindsay Wang.
I don't voice.
Do you know her?
No, I don't know. I mean, I see some voices.
I know.
Eric Zen. Michelle Ben. And then we have our coaches, right? That's all the players we've got, right? So then we've got our coaches. We have Coach Fitzgerald. Coach Johnson, come on forward. And Coach Shen Manasundaram. Come on forward. All right. We are way too long to get a good photo, so we're going to double this up. So can we get some girls in front? One coach, a couple coaches on each side. Everybody get out of the way. They come flying out of that box. Everybody has that same problem. All right. One last round of applause for the badminton. I can take Eric's hotel. Yeah, we got hotels. Hotel or. Ah, the hotel.
This is sweet.
All right. Not to be tops, but also a team that tends to meet up at the same time as the Badminton Group. Our Girls Water Polo Team, Coach, how many, what's your record over the last five or six years? What, how many times have you won a state championship?
A lot of men's and nude loss.
I'll take that, I'll take that. So our Girls Water Polo State Championship, again, another group that just epitomizes what it means to be excellent and to really believe in their team and the way that they work together. And if you had a chance, lucky enough to have the state finals here on campus. Hosting that state finals for quite some time. And it's something that we've gotten wonderful at as a school. And it's just an amazing atmosphere. And I don't know, I, we were talking earlier, Stone and I were talking about how amazing it was that day, all the cheering, all the people that came out to support these athletes. So it's absolutely amazing. So we're going to run through the water polo team. It looks like we've got a lot of kids here, so we're going to bring them up. Olivia Bacheck. Get that picture. M. Barrett. Katie Boarding.
Katie. Sorry.
Sophia Brown. Giselle Lemmons. Katie Stelany. Victoria Duncan. Mia Gusse Nova. Emily Headley. Natalie Hooper. Lisa Kolbanova. Elsa Kuchekis. Caitlin Lu. Elise Regalato. Awesome. Caroline Rakowski. Becca Stone.
Thank you so much.
And then we've got our coaching staff. Coach Albrun. Coach Wong. And our head coach, Jeff Winer. If you didn't get to see it, his swan dive into the pool when they won the championship was fantastic. It was, yeah, it was one for the ages. All right, go ahead, I think that's a small enough group you guys can squeeze in, you like each other. All right, everybody, oh, wait, we've got one more. They had the good smile the first time through. Thank you, thank you. And we have one last team to recognize. So we'll, we've got one last group. This is our Science Reach Club State Champions. So here's the big question, what does REACH stand for? Do we know? I don't know that I know. It's all in the capital letters, so it means something really, really good. I am sure. Surya Agnewal. Nikhil Gangavaru. Angela Loeb. The phone, it hits his phone battery, might be done. Jennifer Wine. Haruti Tiwari. And Srihan Tumala. The coaches for this team, Coach Palfi and Coach Bratman could not be here tonight, so we'll get one last individual picture. We're going to get you all together for a group shot, and stay right where you are. Moms and dads, get that picture. That was more names than I read at graduation.
Didn't you love Graduation?
All right, one last round of applause for the State Championships. Congratulations. I know we're going to get taken off, but that is, for all the families that have hung out, it was absolutely amazing to see the level of excellence that occurs around here, day in, day out, in all different spaces. We're just so proud of all of you as students, so thank you very much for everything you've done. Thanks, everybody.
Bye. And that was the best part of the whole thing.
Hey, Pia.
I'm.
She actually missed her first one, the Statesman. Do you know how you put them down here? I don't want anyone, there's so many, I don't.
Do we have any speakers?
What? All right, well, that was fun.
That was very exciting.
That was awesome.
If you land 150 kids, excuse me, I shouldn't call them kids.
I've pooped.
150 students from tonight, to the people who have won state championships that we've been giving awards all year long to. Does anyone know, Jamie?
How many state championships total?
If we had 150 tonight, plus we gave, I don't know how many last, 60 last time, plus?
I would have guessed 10 this year.
What?
And I think there's some, some that weren't even on the list tonight, because we knew they.
They weren't coming.
They weren't coming, they called and said they weren't coming, so the number's even higher.
Amazing. Well, it's amazing regardless. All right, so do we have any visitor statements? Anyone? Okay, come on up. We ask for statements to be three minutes in length, and typically, we don't respond or answer questions during the statement, but if your comments require or you would like any follow-up, we will do that with you at the end. Okay? Floor yours?
Good evening, my name is Lakshmi Dev, and I'm currently a rising junior at Stevenson.
Hey, my name is Anketh Naik, and I'm going to be a freshman here at Stevenson, and I'm a volunteer with HSS.
Today, we're here to talk about the Annual Teacher Appreciation Day, also called Guruvandana. This event was organized and hosted by Hindu Swamsevak Sangh, also known as HSS, on the 7th of May. Hindu Swamsevak Sangh USA, or HSS USA, is a voluntary, nonprofit, social, educational, and cultural organization. HSS aims to coordinate the Hindu-American community to practice, preserve, and advance ideals and values of Hindu Dharma. The Guruvandana program provides a platform for students like me to honor their teachers for imparting knowledge and wisdom to them. During this event, we as students invited our teachers and paid our respect to them by uniquely celebrating the student-teacher relationship. Student got blessings from their teachers and honored them in the true Hindu tradition. This has instilled in me this importance and the role of teachers in our lives, and it allowed me to appreciate their sacrifice and service to shape our futures. On May 7th, HSS Buffalo Grove was joined by multiple Hindu community organizations, honoring a total of 85 educators from 13 school districts and 24 schools, including two school superintendents, five school principals, and two school board presidents from Lake County, with a total attendance of around 400. Various news establishments also published about our event, including the Chicago Tribune. In 2022 alone, across the country, Guruvandana has been celebrated in 71 cities from 23 states, with 3,233 teachers being honored from 62 school districts and a total participation of 7,634. Guruvandana is an ancient tradition in India, which is still practiced today. It was a great opportunity for teachers to experience Hindu culture. Teachers often find the experience exhilarating as well as emotional. We will continue our tradition every year, and we hope you can join us next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is that a written statement?
Yeah.
Could you just give it to our, to Pia, it'll go in our minutes?
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we were here in April to invite the board, as well as all the kids actually sent out personal invites, and we were lucky that more than 10-plus teachers from Stevenson also were honored during that event, and they were joined with their family in this event.
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
That's a wonderful tradition.
New business.
Okay. So tonight, we're bringing forward a couple items. The first is, after the first reading in May, we're bringing forward tonight the approval of board policy updates. So we had a chance to share those last month, we had a chance to look over them, and tonight we're bringing Press Plus Issue 110 to you, as we've done revisions for your approval.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions for Eric or Pia?
Who's the second?
Gary was second. It was Steve was first, Gary was second. Any questions for Eric and Pia on this? I just have to say once again, we talked about this last month, but this is great, the way it's all put together, I really appreciate it. Great.
I had a lot to do with it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We knew you did.
Okay, then, that is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, we also have tonight, the approval, we brought it to you last month, bringing it forward to you again tonight, Approval Number 2023-24 Student Guidebook. Again, most of the changes for the next school year are formatting and wordsmithing, et cetera.
Can I have a motion to approve the student guidebook?
Grace, thank you.
Second.
Who was the second?
Ronnie.
And I see Don was added, he's no longer TBD, so that's good.
Who's second?
Who's second? Ronnie.
Ronnie.
Yet we can't see and hardly hear at the sound.
Okay, any questions on the guidebook? All right, it's a voice vote, Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, included in the consent is the final 2022-23 calendar, and I don't think, Pia, there were any changes.
There are no changes.
For, that occurred during the school year. Personnel items are there for.
We have to vote on that.
Oh, no, it's part of consent.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. It can be part of consent. You'll see kind of a smorgasbord, if you will, of personnel items that are included in the Personnel Report. And then, that takes us to the Business Section, and we will not need an executive session following the board meeting, and that takes us to the Business Section. Shaun, a public hearing?
Yep. As we discussed in our April board meeting, and then again in our May finance meeting, we do need to amend the budget this year, primarily due to timing of some tax revenue, the creation or expansion of the ELC, creating the ELC West, and then some additional costs associated with our special ed program, the Patriot Wellness Center. We have had the budget on display since May 8th, as required by law. So tonight, we are going to recommend that the Board of Education open a public hearing on the proposed 2022-23 amended budget.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
That was Steve and Don. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in a public hearing, any comments? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing is ended. So now, could I get a motion to adopt the amended 2022-2023 budget?
So move.
Second.
Who's the mover?
Steve.
Steve. Would you please poll the board?
Absolutely. Tyre.
Aye.
Frost.
Penny.
No.
Aye.
Ben Yosef.
Aye.
Chow.
Aye.
Gorson.
Aye.
Moons.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to nothing.
Excellent, and then, as we had discussed at tonight's finance meeting as well, it is that time of year to start thinking, or actually, not start thinking, but start the approval process for the 23-24 school year budget. I'm happy to say that we are inching closer to a balanced budget, and we should have a balanced budget for the board to approve in August. But today, what we need the board to do is two things. One is to set a date for the, putting the budget on display, and we are recommending that the budget be displayed on June 30th. And then, secondly, we are going to ask the board to set a public hearing for discussion on the budget, which we were asking the board to go ahead and set for August 21st of 2023.
Can I get a motion? So move.
Second.